All right, so can I? I can't see on my screen, I would like to, but uh. Oh, there we go, now I can see everybody. All right. I don't know, I guess I'll have to scroll across them. Every time I use my iPad, I have to think about it, but either way, all right, we're gonna get going. Welcome, everybody, to our planning board meeting again, another Zoom planning board meeting this Wednesday, April 21st. Two thousand twenty-one, first up is a roll call, and I see this evening we've got John Beckett. We've got Dave Thompson, we have Krista Schwinter, we've got Lisa Buck. We've got Mike Costello, Judd McIntosh. And myself, Phil Ruck. So next up, acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
I move, we accept the agenda as presented.
Very good. I have a second. Very good. I do have one suggestion, just spoke with Kyle, just to make it easy on the applicant, would anybody mind if we bumped new business ahead of old business? And then we'll get back to the solar discussion after we we finish with Mr. Brayley. Any issues with that? Just swap those items. Very good. So we're gonna, we'll do that, so with that swap. Jessica, can you do a quick roll?
Yep, for the approval of the agenda for the April Planning Board Meeting, Krista Schwinter.
Approve.
John Beckett.
Approved.
Dave Thompson. Lisa Buck.
Approved.
Phil Ruck.
Approved.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
Judd McIntosh.
Approved.
That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, hey, we have seven tonight.
Very good. Very good, thank you, Jessica. Next up is approval of the minutes of the February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, and March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one meetings, I did not have a copy of the meeting minutes in in my packet, so I'm just gonna go with your your good eyes, everybody else on the board. But uh, so can I have a motion, please?
Can we do those one at a time instead of doing them together?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the February minutes either in my pack, my packet.
Those would have been in your March packet, because we didn't end up. We're voting on them last month, because we had so few people.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move, we approve the February minutes.
Okay, yep, I have a second on that.
I'll second, I was there.
Very good, I I was at that meeting, I was not at the the March meeting, so I won't be able to vote on that. Do we have any comments, edits for for Jessica on the meeting of the seventeenth, February seventeenth, that is? No, no edits. Perfect score for Jessica. Very good. Yeah, hearing hearing none. Jessica, awesome work, I don't know that I have ever had that every time we've asked, so that that that's a new one for me. So can you do a quick roll, please?
Yeah, for the approval of the February Planning Board Minutes, Krista Schwinter.
Approve.
John Beckett.
Approved.
Dave Thompson.
Approved.
Lisa Buck.
Approved.
Phil Ruck.
Approved.
Michael Costello.
Approved.
Judd McIntosh.
Uh, pass, I wasn't there.
That's six, four, with one abstaining.
Very good, thank you, Jessica, next up, can I get a motion for the March seventeenth meetings?
Okay, I'll move, we approve the March seventeenth meetings.
Very good, can I have a second, please?
I was there, I'll second.
Very good, thanks, Mike, any discussion edits on those minutes?
I do have some edits.
Very good.
Page three. Towards the bottom of the page. Uh, we have numbered items one and two. This is in item two. And one, two, three, four, the fourth line down and item two reads, anyone in the area on a lot with a single family home that is at least ten thousand. Uh, we need some kind of units there, I think it's probably square feet.
Sorry about that. Got it.
Okay, and then on page six. Um, at the top. We had a motion to table the land use ordinance. But then the final vote said that the motion to recommend the ordinance amendment to town council passed for and none against. It was the motion was to table.
Oh, for heaven's sake, sorry about that. Got it.
Other comments? Is that it for for you, Krista?
That's it.
Very good, after there's no other comments, Jessica, can you take a roll, I will be abstaining from this vote.
For the approval of the March Planning Board Minutes, Krista Schwinter.
Approve.
John Beckett.
Abstain, I wasn't there.
Dave Thompson.
Approved.
Lisa Buck.
Abstain, I wasn't there.
Phyllis abstaining, Michael Costello.
Approved.
Judd McIntosh.
Approved.
Let's do a quick tally, so that's four, four, with three abstaining. Is that, is that gonna work?
That's, I don't know that we can do any better. Yeah.
Everybody who was there.
Yeah, I guess, I guess we'll, we'll take it. Yeah, but thank you, Jessica.
Unless we had an illegal meeting last month.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll talk about that later, we actually do have some interested people in our our two positions, so that that'll be for the end of the meeting. Next up, we have new business, it, we have one public hearing this evening, it's this for a major site plan review for Dice Art Realty Company, located at seventeen Stillwater Ave, tax map eleven lots fifty-nine and sixty in the Commercial One District, to expand the existing fuel station and convenience store use. I do see the the applicant's representative is with us this evening, so Mr. Brayley, could you summarize what what we're we're gonna be reviewing this evening? Chairman, Chairman Rock, and it's, it's nice to see you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I, that's right, hey, before we get going, Scott, I I do recall Dave Thompson, I saw him on the butters list, so is that, is that what you were? Uh, gonna tell us, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am in the butter, I I can step down if you want, I don't see any problem with the with the with the deal, so I could stay on if you want.
Yeah, I let's, let's uh. You can ask questions, Dave, but we'll, we'll, I I prefer with this one, if if you just recuse, but please join the discussion if you have questions, but won't ask for your vote. Very good, so Mr. Brayley, back to you.
Good evening again, Chairman Ruck, it's nice to see your smiling face. First thing I'd like to do is start off by thanking Kyle for all the help he provided, myself and Amy Young from our firm, and getting this application together. We went back and forth a few times to make sure we had hopefully everything that you're looking for. And I think if the Board Secretary can, Amy was supposed to sign into this, so I don't know if you need to elevate her, or if a town planner needs to elevate her, in case she needs to provide any technical input.
Yeah, Belle, are you there, Amy Young would be another.
She'll rejoin us as a panelist.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, so we'll, I'll get started. Dice Arts currently has a convenience store and and fueling station off Godfrey, just off Stillwater Ave, as I'm sure you're all aware, just off the interchange at Stillwater. Um, that building has been there, it's all part of the Stillwater Ave interchange park. But Lot thirteen, which is where this building was, that building existed prior to the park's existence. Since then, Dice Arts has also bought Lot eleven, which basically wraps all the way around Godfrey and down to the big drainage swale before you get to the hotel. So they've added a couple acres to that, to the existing parcel. And the plan is to go in there and update and improve their current, the current site. The plan will be to construct a new convenience store behind the existing convenience store, still facing basically at Stillwater. Build that, keep the existing store in operation while that's happening. Then tear down the old store, they're also looking at adding a car wash there. And then they will also be tearing down, when they tear down the old building, they'll putting, be putting in new updated fuel canopy. Um, and and tearing down the old fuel canopy. All of this will move the 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 building and the canopy slightly further from Stillwater Avenue. Um, but about the same distance, or maybe a little bit further from Godfrey. Um, we've been in contact with, as required, sewer, there's no issues. We're actually making improvements to the sewer system, because right now Dice Hearts has a service that comes across the the Lot twelve from Godfrey. Um, and in talking with Joe Madigan at the treatment plant, he's really happy to get rid of that, and so we're gonna connect directly to a manhole that is down on Godfrey. This will include obviously an oil water separator at the at the car wash, it'll also involve a grease trap for the deli in the store itself. The existing tanks, underground storage tanks for the fueling have not been in place that long, they will remain and just be reconnected to the new pumps and canopies, we're not changing the number of pumps. The one thing we are doing to try to make it a little more user friendly is that we, if you take a look on the Stillwater Ave side of the property, we're actually adding a small fuel island with a couple of fueling positions for diesel trucks. Um, so that we can keep them out of the main flow of traffic. Um, and they will the existing entrance, and then we'll exit around the back of the building, we've also added some truck parking out there um, to avoid, to avoid confusion and conflict in the in the area where most of the passenger cars will be. Um, the other thing that you would note on the plan is just to the left of the existing, just to the left of the new building, there's five or six parking spaces, I'd have to look at the plan, that the intent.
Scott, real quick, I know we had a, we had a comment from someone in the public hoping to see the plan, would it be helpful if I shared my screen with the site plan while you were talking?
Sure, that's fine, that'd be great.
The board members are okay with that. Very good.
There we go, so um, the the plan sheet that that we have up there is sheet C one, it's the layout sheet, and as you can see, there is, if we if we start from the Stillwater side, which is the bottom of the plan, if you will, the first thing you see going up is a square, which is where the new canopy will be for the diesel trucks, and then a couple of parking spots for trucks there, although um, I think what we're going to do there, because we have more than enough parking, there was some question about queuing for the car wash, because on warm days, we all know how car washes get in in April and October in Maine, when everybody's trying to get that one day above freezing, when they can then get the car washed. So we may eliminate one of those spaces, which is really nothing other than changing the painting on the on the uh, on the, on the pavement. And then just above those, the long rectangles are the existing underground tanks. Just above that is the new canopy, which shows the three islands. And then the series of parking in front of the store, the store will have a covered walkway. Um, if any of you have been up and down the I ninety-five corridor in the Bangor area in the last few years, this is similar to what we've done at their store in Newburgh on Route sixty-nine, and also on Colebrook Road in Hampden. The store, including the outside freezers and coolers are about, is about sixty-one hundred square feet. Um, and then we have a perimeter drive with a drive-through window, which I'll, I will address in just a second. Um, and then an exit only out the back. And then, as I was saying, if you look to the left of the building, parking spaces seventeen through twenty-one are going to be wired for electric vehicle charging. Um, that is something that's becoming very popular and and in fact necessary from a business perspective. Um, sewer will, Kyle, could you go to the next sheet, C two? Oh, this is great. Um, water is going to come in off Godfrey, you'll see the line coming in out almost to Stillwater, and that is because of the valve station, the valve station um, for the water system, we need to be on the Stillwater outside of that, that'll come in um, with a four-inch line to the building, and then we'll be metered and come back out to the to the car wash, as well as service the building. Um, natural gas will come in the, to the back of the building. Uh, the sewer will go out the back of the building, again, as I said, with an oil water separator for the car wash, separately from a grease trap for the kitchen, and those will go down and tie into the manhole on Godfrey. Um, and and I think your documents will show that we have all the necessary letters from sewer and the sewer and water groups. Um, the dumpster for the building will be in the back, near parking spaces twenty-six through thirty-one, it'll be screened. Um, not only will it be fenced and screened that way, but we've also added a series of plantings along the right-of-way um, for Godfrey, for that, for that side of the project. Um, the services there are basically gonna remain as is, there's going to be a deli. Um, there's going to be retail, they're just getting a little bit bigger, they need the space. Um, the, I saw that note, the fence around the um, uh, the dumpster will be six feet tall, which is, which is standard. Um, and it will be, it'll be chain-linked and slatted with vinyl slats, which again is pretty standard these days. Um, see, uh, drive-through window, I expected some questions on the drive-through window. They have a tenant about this. Um, there, there is no tenant for that drive-through window at this point, it's something they were considering. Um, at this point, with COVID and everything going on, they have considered using that window for their own um, distribution of product out the window to, for people that would prefer to do on the go back up versus coming in the store. Um, we're not sure if that actually is going to happen, if not, then that area out there is simply going to be additional retail and storage in that window. This time is not planned for use. Um, keep seeing, seeing a couple chat.
Scott, I just done the process, yeah, I just wanna address that, so uh, for all the folks that are watching, we we have not actually opened up the the public hearing yet for comments, so how we're gonna proceed with this is Jessica's gonna be logging all these comments. And Scott will just have you address those as we get through, but just, yeah, please continue your presentation. Then we'll have questions from board members to the applicant. Uh, and then we'll be addressing, when I open up the public hearing, we'll go down the the comments that that keep coming in, but Scott, you don't need to address these, these on the fly.
So, um, and actually, that pretty much sums up what what I had to offer, at least initially, Mr. Chairman, and and I'm more than willing to answer questions as there, as needed from the board members and then the public.
Very, very good, we also have in our packets, a summary of the the project prepared by town staff. Kyle, could you briefly go through your review, any other issues that the town staff identified during during the review?
Sure, can everyone hear me, okay? Okay, uh, so yeah, I think Scott covered a lot of it. But just, you know, some in general things, again, this is located in the Commercial One. Um, the existing use of the the fuel stations and convenience store is allowed in the district. The car wash would be considered an accessory use to that, which would also be allowable. And, you know, just to follow up real quick on the the drive-through. Scott mentioned that's really right now not being proposed to be used in sort of any sort of way. Um, it is something that staff has talked about a little here since sending out the report, and we would probably just add another condition of approval, once we get to that point. That, you know, once the or if there comes a time when the applicant is looking to lease that space out to a potential vendor to operate the the drive-through portion, that it would come back to the the planning board for kind of an amended site plan review, just to follow up with any updated traffic impact. Um, you know, analysis or data that was required. Um, the trip generation doesn't really change from what's being done now to what's being proposed. But, you know, with, you know, changing that, you know, drive-through aspect, while drive-through restaurants are an allowable use in the district, and there's potential for that to to be there. It just require a little extra review by the board, if the applicant decides to go forward in that direction. Um, outside of that, um, you know, I think the the big thing that we looked at here was the the stormwater, and, you know, we spent a lot of time talking with the town engineer and Public Works Director about the original subdivision approval, and how that was approved by the planning board in the eighties. At that time, there were, you know, calculations based on future development that considered a maximum impervious area of one and a half acres per lot in the subdivision, um, still being managed by what was approved at the time, as far as stormwater management practices go. Um, so with this development would fall under that one and a half acres of new impervious on this lot that Dice Arts has purchased. So in talking with town staff, it was agreed that no additional stormwater management was really required. You know, there's this the easement along the the kind of bottom area of the plan there, where there are some some wetlands potentially that are mostly being avoided. There's a small piece of wetlands that does jut out into the project area, we you know, staff here, we spoke with main DEP about that, and, you know, the applicant would have to you know, work with main DEP to do some sort of in-lu fee for that small impacted area. Um, or work that out prior to to getting the the building permit. The plan was reviewed by the fire department for emergency access. Um, they gave their okay and did not see any issues. Um, it meets all minimum lot size and setback requirements, off-street parking requirements, things like that. Um, you know, the applicants also provided a vegetated buffer along the at the, you know, the top side of the plan there, on the eastern side of the lot. That kind of screens some of the parking area from view. So staff didn't really identify any other issues, but happy to answer any questions that board members might have.
Good, so I will open it up, the board members, other questions for for Kyle or Scott, I I do have, do have a couple.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I don't want to interrupt you, can I just, can I take care of a couple of things that Kyle said right now before, so that I don't forget them, and then we can go on to all the board members?
Sure.
Um, with regard to the drive-through, I've already spoken to the owner, and they're very, they understand about that being a future use and that a condition on the permit for a change of use or revised site plan and revisit the planning board is not an issue on our part. We agree with it a hundred percent. Um, and with regard to the wetland, we have been in contact with DEP and are trying to arrange to pay that in lieu fee. So we have no issues with that being, you know, a condition on the permit prior to that disturbance. So we're, we're, we're perfect with both of those things.
Very good, I was gonna ask about the the wetlands, the staff did mention that. So I I had a, just a couple of questions, because in Kyle's summary, it said the applicant is proposing to treat stormwater from the proposed impervious area with a small underdrained soil filter, but the application says no, no stormwater management, I looked at the plan, and I didn't, didn't see a filter, but.
Right, I think initially we had talked to Kyle about that, and then we got into the the town's planning board approval and the DEP's approval. It was determined that we did not need to do that, and staff agreed, and I apologize that that didn't get taken out of whatever document it was still in.
Another question on that, so in the stormwater management section of Kyle's review, he did mention that staff does however recommend that the applicant have further conversation with main DEP to verify that they will not require any additional stormwater on site, have you, have you knocked that one off the list, Scott, have you spoken with them?
We have, in in fact, it was the conversations between DEP and Kyle um, that led us to that acre and a half of impervious that we could have on that Lot twelve. Um, so we've had those conversations, but I certainly, and again, as a condition of approval, if the board sees that, I'll get something in writing from Jessica Damon, I think is who we talked to at the.
Okay. But yeah, that was one of the recommendations, so.
I think that was my, I, you know, staff here, we spoke with main DEP about, you know, there's really, there was the initial planning board approval of the initial subdivision. But then there was also the site law permit from DEP, and the condition was really based on whether DEP would be requiring any amendments based on the the site law permit, and if anything came of that, then there might be a need to to bring it back to the planning board for for review. But yeah, that as far as on the town side, when in speaking with Public Works and the town engineer, that we felt it met the the original planning board approval. Um, but yeah, Scott said, just, you know, some sort of verification from from DEP before the the building permit was issued.
Yeah, I I think that would be wise to to get that, to cover the town.
And Mr. Chairman, we will also, we will be filing a stormwater PBR, because we will be disturbing an acre while working, it just won't end up meeting any threshold, so we'll be good.
Can you clarify, I know Kyle mentioned to the east side, because you, you know, you're removing that existing entrance, and I'm just looking at the hat, what's, is is that gonna be lawn there that?
Yes, you know. Yep, that's gonna be landscaped, that will be.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I couldn't tell from from the plan, but that's. Uh, geez, right off the bat, what's, what's your idea on timing here, construction, what's, what's the, you know, the tentative plan?
Yeah. Cool, without seeming that I'm in any way putting pressure on the planning board, if we don't get approval tonight, my butt's gonna be in a sling, because I think they're hoping to break ground, but of course, they still need to get a building permit through the town too. But yes, it is, it is imminent, this is a, this summer, as you were well aware, how busy contractors are. Um, they contract lined up, and he is, he's, if he's, if he's not have the equipment loaded on the trailer by now, he will be as soon as he hears that it's approved.
Okay, yeah, I I had a question, because I I kind of figured with the the new Hampden store that that might be perhaps what, you know, their their new model, I wondered, uh, does that one have a drive-through, the Hampden store, because I think.
Hampden does not, it.
Newburgh does, right?
Newburgh does, that is correct. Newburgh, Newburgh actually has a Dunkin' Donuts in that end.
Right.
Yeah, obviously, we're not gonna, there's, there'll be no Dunkin' Donuts here because of the standalone store that's just down the street.
Right, well, actually, that one, the one that's just down the street is. Right. Well, actually that one, the one that's just down the street is closed. Now they moved it over toward, well, the old Tim Hortons is.
Well, there is, I mean, when you leave this site and head down Stillwater, right there on the right. And then as you, as you get into Old Town, there's one that used to be further out Stillwater that is closed and they're moving one into, into Tim Hortons. I was not, I think it's two different franchisees that own the one.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe I was. From this one and, and the one across where Tim Hortons used to be.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that's, that's my list of questions. Other board members question for Kyle or, or the applicant before we open up the, the hearing. Cause I, I can see we have many comments.
I have one question, but it's not, it's not directly related to this. And I was just wondering about the nineteen eighty-four calculation of stormwater. That was well over thirty years ago. And I just wonder with climate change is, is that going to impact this at all or?
Good, good question. Scott, you want to?
I was going to say Phil probably is better than me to answer this, but while, while I'm sure Phil would agree that there are some, there were certainly some changes in, in the storm events and frequencies and that. D E P's rules in eighty-four with regard to stormwater in the site law are basically the same as they are now in requiring both detention and, or I should say quality and quantity treatment when it is a site law project. And so the end result, if we review this now, would probably not, would probably not change what you would end up with.
Yeah. Very good question, Lisa. And again, this, this is something that, you know, we, we, we have to go by the, the ordinances and, you know, the, the applicants have to go by the state standards as, as they are now. Clearly maybe when we talk about our next comp plan and, and what the town wants to do, maybe, maybe we'll have another discussion about stormwater standards, but we're, we're pretty much locked in for, for what we're reviewing now. Other questions?
Yes. I have a question about the planting plan. There's a strip shown with trees in it. And there's a long description in the end as to how the vegetation is to be handled. How to plant every kind of tree and so forth. But I could not find a list of plant materials or how they were to be arranged.
Scott?
Yeah, sorry. I'm, I'm, I apologize. Where my camera, my desk said I kind of hate to turn my back at, at you folks, but we did not specify the planting materials through there, only that it had to happen. If the board has something particular in mind, for instance, if you would prefer coniferous trees, softwoods, so that they're more of a solid screen and less seasonal than a hardwood, we're certainly willing to do that and would take that as a condition of, of approval.
Usually we, we get a planting plan. I mean, that's, and it's, and we had an application some years ago where the owner was not allowed to make the planting plan. It had to be made by a landscape architect. I don't know whether this is going to be that big, but we, we do usually expect to get that as part of the application.
Well, we do have the details of the different tree types.
Well, you have details of how to plant them, but you don't have, I couldn't find a list of what they are.
And I will, I will say that we, I mean, we have a landscape architect in-house. He was involved in this project. If, if there's nothing on there specifying a, a particular plant, then I apologize. I mean, we certainly can, can add that. It can be. We can provide that to the board or to the staff, whatever, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Krista, can you, you're, you're a resident plant expert. Can you weigh, weigh in on, on, again, what, what we've typically seen, a lot of the, the plantings that, you know, I don't know that they varied that much, but just, just some recommendations. Yeah.
Yeah, we get a layout of what the names of the plants that are to be planted and how they are to be arranged.
Yep.
And we get this for, you know, like relatively small projects like the former Maine State Police Station with its rather small planting, but we got the details of what was planned.
Right.
And obviously there's been some thought because there, there's this whole big set of instructions as to how to plant this kind of tree and that kind of tree.
We, quite frankly, I don't think we saw anything in the ordinance that specified the screening type. And so we were basically leaving it up to the landscaper and the owner. But if the board would like.
We just want to know what they are planning. It's, it's part of the proposal.
Yep. I, I'm just curious. So you, you've shown three existing trees there and then, you know, that whole row beyond the, the employee parking. Would it make sense to, to match them up? Krista, do we have any guidance if this is going to be an additional?
We have that strip there that's shown, I think it's on C two that shows a series of trees. All, I assume they're trees that some of them, some of them might be bushes. Who knows?
They're, they're trees.
And, but there's, there's nothing about them, no information about them, other than that they're pictured. At least that, nothing that I could find.
I, I mean, so we, we see eleven, eleven trees. I, I assume that they were trees based on the, again, the, the details that the applicant provided. Krista, I mean, do we have any, just guidance on, on what, what would be there? I think the, the public that's here. So I, again, screening is a requirement in, in our ordinance. So if that, if that comes up. And again, whether, whether it's hardwoods or softwoods, we, we can figure that out. And again, if this is to be added to as a condition of approval, that will need more information, but.
Yeah, I do think.
Really the point, but yeah.
Right. The ordinance requires, you know, the language talks about, you know, vegetation buffers shall contain vegetation for a variety and mixture of landscaping. The variety shall be based on consideration of susceptibility to disease harden, hardiness for specific site location colors. But it doesn't necessarily require that, you know, specifics are, are provided. So I do think, yeah, that's something that a lot of applications may show, but it wasn't necessarily something one hundred percent required by the ordinance.
And as a, as I said with the, the wetlands issue and, and the others, if, if the board in particular, members winter would like to see, for instance, fir trees because they're, you know, they're native and they are a better screen than if we put a hardwood in there that's going to lose its leaves. We're more than happy to have that be part of a condition. We're not, we're not opposed to what might be placed out there.
I have a comment, Phil, on this.
Yep.
That's heavy clay soil out there. And if you plant certain trees on them, they are not going to survive. I think next to the Target building, they planted some red pine that didn't do well at all. You know, we, I've worked with the tree board, it's worked on some of that area out there with heavy wet soil. You've got to be very careful what you plant.
I think, I think that's a good comment. Does it make sense to me, listening to the, you know, the, the discussion here? That, that we have the applicant, just before they, they put something in there, just maybe consult with, with the, the tree board, would, would that make sense? I mean, there's an awful lot of expertise, you know, in, in town. Obviously Krista's knowledge as well, but I just, you know, we need to, to address this, you know, so we can have an idea, you know, what would be appropriate for, for that area, given the, the soils and what, what Dave just mentioned. But I, it seems reasonable for perhaps that we could refer this to the tree board is, is one of the conditions. Does, does that make sense?
We certainly could submit, we, I have no problem meeting with the tree board or getting their input. And then we can provide that as part of the information that we've already committed prior to the building permit.
Right. That, that would seem reasonable. I mean, Dave's knowledge, no point in putting something in there if it's, if it's not viable. So. If, if, if that makes sense, the, it, people seem to think that's okay. Thumbs up for now is, is if we add that is a condition of approval.
Is, is the land the same as the Black Bear Inn, is the, the ground, the soil? Is it relatively the same? For whatever they have planted at the Black Bear Inn, would that be a good lead or a good example?
Could be. I don't recall right offhand what they, what they have over there, but I, I, I think, I think we can sort this out. Again, just a little bit of consultation. I'm not sure that we need select which, which species are going there this evening, as long as we, you know, identify it as a condition. Check with the tree board and that would, that would seem to address this in, in my opinion.
Okay. I, I would agree with that. I think for us to try to design this on the spot, doesn't make any sense at all.
No, no, not really the role, the planning board. I, I occasionally we can make comments if it's going to address an issue quickly, but yeah, I, I, I'd rather identify it, just have some consultation with the tree board and then we can have as, as a condition. But I, I don't think this board wants to get in, into the business of landscaping.
Well, I think this is why we have had requirements. I mean, I know at least for some in the past that the landscaping be done by a landscape architect so that we have something to, to go by. And if the tree board can do this, I don't, from the discussion of how things were to be planted, it sounded almost like there was some consideration of maybe including some shrubs.
Right.
So I think we, we need, the tree board would be a good way to start, but I don't know whether this is going to, whether they have all trees in mind or whether they're going to want it something that's a little more interesting than just trees.
Right. I, I think Scott, you, you've heard some of the concern. You, you mentioned that you have a landscape architect on staff. So you, you come up with something, consult with the tree board and, and that, that would seem to be sufficient.
Absolutely. Yeah. Have, have no issues with that.
Are you good? Are, are people okay with that? Does that, that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Okay, great. Thanks for the comments. Other, other questions for Scott before, you know, we've, we've got a list of, of public attendees. Love to get to some of their comments as well.
I just want to, wanted a clarification on what we just decided. So we're saying that prior to receiving a building permit, the, the tree board needs to approve their planning plan, their planting plan. Is that what we're saying essentially? The tree board has to sign off on it. What, what is this recommendation exactly? Cause I'm not sure if we've had tree board sign off before.
Right. I, I, my, my thought was consultation with the tree board. I'm not sure that they would approve anything, you know, formally, but I just think it makes sense just to, you know, rather than, as Krista said, usually we have a little bit more of an idea of, of, you know, of screening those kinds of things. So I, I, I think if they just consult with the tree board, I'm not sure that the tree board is, you know, in, in lieu of planning board approval, that's not what I'm, I'm getting at, or my, my thought was just, just talk to people that, that know more than, than we do, or me, me in particular, as, as far as what, what would be appropriate.
We will, we will put together a proposal with our landscape architect and take it to the tree board to make sure that, you know, what they know of the area and
Yeah.
success rate of different plantings that what we're proposing makes sense. And, and I will, we'll, we'll double check the area too. One of the members mentioned the Blackberry Inn. I'm not sure that the soils are the same down there, but we certainly can take into consideration what they have for plantings.
Does, does that answer your question, Chad?
I guess we're saying that they'd come to an agreement. I just want to make sure that if, you know, that there is kind of a process whereby if we're not, the town isn't happy with what the plantings are, right? That there is some sort of way that the town can then go to Dice Arts, some mechanism and say, hey, this isn't adequate. Right? It's always, it's always, you know, you always think everyone's going to do the right thing. And I think ninety-five percent of the time they do, but if for some reason there is some sort of disagreement after the fact, what's, what's the recourse for the town to tell Dice Arts, oh, you planted eleven twelve inch bushes here. This isn't going to cut it.
So we will certainly, we will certainly specify height, caliper, all of that, along with the information goes to the planning board. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm not, you know, I don't want to dump this on the tree board. It was just, just a thought. I mean, there's, there's a lot of knowledge on that board. But just listened to a conversation with council the other day. So Kyle, I'm not even sure a process, whether the, I guess the tree board could approve it. I'm, I'm not opposed. I, I think Scott understands what we're, we're getting at here. Consult with the tree board and, and then they have to sign off on, on the plan. Is that a reasonable thing to ask the board, Kyle, in your opinion?
Yeah, I think so. So the buffering and, and screening standards, it's not really, it's not really necessarily a requirement like certain other things. It's something that the board can recommend along certain property lines. So I think with that, you know, it's not like a, an off-street parking requirement where, you know, an applicant necessarily has to, you know, follow a standard. The buffering and screening is more up to the board's discretion, I think. So I, I believe that that would be acceptable.
Correct. The, the way I looked at it, the applicant has provided them, they plan to put something in there. And we've been pretty consistent with, you know, I'm just thinking of the Dunkin' Donuts when we approved that, just, you know, I just up the road that, you know, that we, we are usually quite consistent about our, our screening and just, you know, being, being good neighbors and, you know, for a project like this. I, I think we, we have a little bit of leeway as far as a board, just to, you know, provide some buffering, some screening from Godfrey Drive. And again, it's, you know, around the dumpster that, you know, that area. So I, I don't think this is unreasonable to request the screening in there. You know, they already had trees on the, on their plan. So I, I think let's just move forward with that.
We don't, we don't have any issue and we'll, we'll formalize, we've put forth and be more specific and, and then get it. If Kyle will just get me the contact for who I need to get over the tree board, that would be, that would be helpful.
Very good. Tree board. I'm on the tree board. So in one of the co-chairs, so you can just contact me. It'd be really. All you need really to do is take a soil auger, auger out there and test it, see what the soil is. And then you've got a good idea. It's heavy wet clay or it's a till, glacial till or whatever. And then we know what kind of a shrub tree, whatever to recommend.
Very good. Let's, I, I think we've covered this one pretty well. Let's, let's keep moving. Other questions from the board before we open it up to public comment? All right. I'm going to bang my, my pen gavel here. Just logging comments. What?
Just real quick, Phil. So I was speaking with Belle with just a second. The, the council at meetings actually allows people to, to raise their hand, kind of virtually here on Zoom and speak their comments. So it can really go either way. So if the board would like to give the opportunity, people that are attending the meeting can raise their hand at the bottom, I think of their, their Zoom window. And then town staff can promote them to speak their comment.
Yeah. Do, do people have an issue with that? I, you know, I've seen the comments coming in. A lot of times we, you know, in the past, we've just logged them. I, I, you know, I don't, I don't really care if, if people want to be elevated or whatever. Do you want to, want to allow people to chat on our screen today? Let me think. I can only see a few of you. We okay with that? All right. Good. All right, good, uh, all right, so.
Phil, do you want me to put a timer up on this, or are you comfortable with just allowing people to speak, and if it gets too lengthy, you'll?
I'll, I'll regulate that.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah.
So we have two hands raised, um, currently, the first hand that went up was Deb White, are you ready to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I, I did open the public hearing, uh, so we're, we're ready, I am gonna ask, uh, members of the public, I appreciate your patience. Uh, waiting through this, but, uh, what it, what we typically require is, and again, if, if you hear a comment. Uh, that, you know, that somebody has made, uh, that, you know, that we, we try to keep it fresh so that we're, we're not, you know, repeating the same issues. And, you know, again, to kind of keep, keep the, the meeting, uh, moving. So if, if, if you would, just, uh, again, if, if is it, issue is raised and, and we'll address it. Uh, just be, be aware of that, please, so. Yeah, I think we're ready for comments, Deb White, you said is, is.
Yep, I'd allow Deb White to speak.
Very good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, so I'm Deb White, I live at eleven Sylvan Road in Orno and have lived here for, um. Almost twenty-eight years here, we're the second owners of the house, so, um. I have a couple of questions, one is the planning board's, um, role in double checking that. Um, requirements have been met, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts, the last time I spoke before you was when the Dunkin' Donuts. That's opposite, not the brand new one, but the one that was opposite the Wendy's. All kinds of promises were made to us as a butters, including that the, uh, dumpster area would be screened. Which should any longer, there's a ramshackle fence there and, um. The light, the, from the sign shines right in my back picture window, so I am really hesitant and worried. Um, that similar things would happen with this expansion of the plan. And I also noticed, um, that the applicant's representative talked a lot about the visual aspects. But neglected to talk anything about the noise aspects, um, having seen on the site plan. Which I wish I'd been able to study prior to this meeting, um, that there's parking for several. Eighteen wheelers and I'm concerned, um, we are a neighborhood with children. We are a neighborhood with, we're, we're a diverse neighborhood and, um, we're, we have been. Buffeted from the highway noise, but with trucks there twenty-four seven. I'm very concerned about our peace and quiet as a, a dead end neighborhood in Orno. Um, I'm worried about the diesel fumes, um, can you talk to us about those?
And, and Scott, that's a good question, I know that, that the current store has, uh, I mean, limited hours, it is. You know, when, when Deb just mentioned that, uh, mentioned twenty-four seven, that you have the, the hours of operation, I'm just curious, I wanted to.
On the, on the applicant's, um, sheet that the town planner graciously posted for us in the meeting, um, big wheels. You, I'm dating the big rigs, eighteen wheelers, it says twenty-four hour parking there.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Where does it say that?
Where those trucks are, where the truck parking lot is?
The parking space is towards the top of the plan, it indicates twenty-four hour parking on the truck. Part, it says twenty-four hour parking loading zone.
Oh, I think, no, that's, yeah. If you look at that, that is actually parking.
Twenty-four truck.
Twenty-four, um, there.
I can't look at it because it wasn't posted on the website, it wasn't posted on Dice Art's site. And the first, and I didn't realize I had to request it from the town ahead of time, so.
I think that's just a number, I, it, to me, it's, it's sequential, so if it goes by the building is twenty-one and then there's a. Twenty-four, twenty-five, but I don't, I didn't understand that as twenty-four hour.
It is not, it is not, and, and if I may, I'll address all of this White's, um, comments, um.
Yep.
With regard to the dumpster, um, the dumpster is going to be, is going to be a, um. Chain link fence, six feet tall, um, and will have vinyl slats in it that will be colored to match the building. So the, they'll either be a beige or a green to match the building, um, so that, that's what the dumpster will be. Um, the noise, um, will be, in my opinion, no different than what is out there now. Um, it's going to be the same type of operation, um, that currently exists on the site. Um, lighting, we have a lighting plan that we provided the town planner. That shows that the foot candles at all the property lines are basically zero to point two, um, foot candles, I believe. Um, so there, there should be no increase in, in lights, um, off-site, everything with the canopy. And the, the, uh, the building walkway will be, um, can lights that are downcast exactly the way they are now. Um, and we have, we've, we have added some pole lights at the exterior, but there are only, there are already pole lights there. And in all likelihood, um, the ones that we have, if you, if you were to have a chance to look at the, uh, the lighting plan. Um, are, are downcast, shielded and are, are cutoffs, so that there's no off-site. Um, off-site lighting, and then with regard to the truck parking, I can assure you that the twenty-four. That is on that parking space is actually just one of the numbering of the parking spaces, so that city staff. Knew how many we were proposing, um, the applicant is not proposing twenty-four hour parking there for trucks. And their hours of operation, as I understand, will remain, will remain consistent what they, with what they currently are.
So you're saying that the signposts won't be, lighted signs won't be higher than they currently are?
Um, the, the, like, the signs that are out by Stillwater for the Dice Art property itself and for the industrial park. Are not being changed.
And it is not a truck stop in disguise?
It is not a truck stop in disguise, it's a, it is a C-store, a truck stop, for instance, like their.
Excuse me, C-store, could you not use?
I'm sorry, convenience store, convenience store and gas station, um. A truck stop similar to what they have, the big stop off, off Colebrook, um, for, really to service as a truck stop. They have showers for the truckers, um, this, this facility will not have showers for the truckers. Um, it will have a better bath, better bathrooms than are there now, if you've ever had to use that facility, but. Um, it is, it is not a truck stop in disguise, no.
Very good, I, I do wanna, uh, uh, at the start of, uh, your comment. Uh, Deb, you had mentioned, you know, the, the planning board, once we approve things, who, who makes sure things are followed and. That, that is not the, the role of this, this board, you know, we make sure people follow, uh, uh, town ordinances and, and the land use code. But it, uh, af- after we, uh, sign off on our plans and, and go about it. Then it falls on, on town staff to make sure that, that, uh, applicants or, you know, projects are, are followed through. Uh, according to what was on the plan, but, uh, the, the planning board, uh, yeah, we, we don't get paid enough to do that.
I can, I can follow it up, Phil, you know, after the planning board, um, reviews or approves a plan. If, um, if an applicant or developer doesn't, uh, do something that was shown on the site plan. That really falls then into the code enforcement officer to, um, take action against that, so. If people, um, feel that there is a violation or something happening that goes against what the planning board approved. Um, the process from there would be to, um, contact the code enforcement officer, um, and then. You know, that can be investigated and determined, the code officer would then look at the site plan that the planning board approved. To determine if that violation is there, so that's normally the, the enforcement process after the planning board.
So enforcement only happens if somebody complains?
No, not only if, if they complain, it's just that, um, you know, with one code enforcement officer or, you know. You know, town staff that's available, um, it's sometimes the fastest way to notice if someone is, um. Is not meeting something that they were, uh, supposed to be doing, um, sometimes that's the, the fastest way and. The easiest way for us to find out is if, um, is if someone makes a, a comment into, uh, the code enforcement office.
Typically, there are inspections during. Oops, somebody, yeah, there are inspections, uh, you know, during, am I muted again?
Nope.
Okay, uh, during, you know, construction and for building permit for occupancy, so that, you know. That, that's what town staff is, is, uh, tasked with. Very good, so, uh, we do have a lot of comments, uh, Deb, do you, you have more? Cause I, I wanna make sure that we can address everybody, so.
Sorry, I just, um, muted her, so she'll have to unmute in order to reply.
Okay, so I, I did see several come in, I wanna make sure, yeah. All right, uh, we have other hands raised, Belle?
Uh, yes, the next hand that is up is Melanie Brooks.
Melanie?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Melanie Brooks and I, um, live up the road from Deb at three Sylvan Road, so I am. Much closer to Stillwater than she is at the end of our road, um, my grandparents built this house in nineteen fifty-four. And I'm only the second owner, and something that I haven't heard anyone mention yet is the increase in traffic. Um, if there's going to be a bigger convenience store and more places for people to get gas and diesel, I'm assuming there's going to be more traffic. I have a second grader at Asa Adams School and, um, I do not feel safe. Putting him on and off the bus that stops at the end of our street on Stillwater. I now drive him to school and pick him up because I have had too many close calls. Um, with people not following traffic signals, um, passing the bus on the right, for instance, one time. Um, I have made a complaint to the Orno Police Department, but, um, they can't obviously be out every day that the bus stops by. So I've stopped doing that because of the, how the traffic is now, and I worry that with a larger convenience store, more places for gas. The traffic is going to be much worse, um, which also will, um, contribute to the noise. Also, my, uh, other question was, there are two other car washes just down the street in Stillwater, they're located in Old Town. But they are very close, there's one on the corner of, um, College Ave in Stillwater. And there's one down by the VIP, so having another car wash just seems a little egregious to me. So, um, those are my two questions and comments, the traffic and the car wash, thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Sure, um, let me start with, let me start with the traffic, um, the way that traffic calculations are done. And, um, for convenience stores and gas stations, uh, primarily based on the number of fueling islands. So the number of people they can literally put through the fueling islands and, and a certain out, month, number of time, we're not actually changing that. We're actually taking one of them off, um, the main islands and putting it out for the diesel. Um, so the, the, I think Kyle actually mentioned in his staff report and in his comments that. Um, there was a, likely an insignificant increase in traffic there, um, the, the one thing that we have done that may help. Um, Melanie's concerns a little bit is by having a, the exit be further from Stillwater Avenue. There's actually more opportunity for people to queue at that light, um, and not, um, not be stacked up and. Block Godfrey Road, um, as might occur sometimes currently, uh, with regard to people's disregard for traffic. Regulations, I, I, I really, I can't address that, I mean, that's, that is an issue for the DOT or the. Or the police and, and we can't obviously control what happens on Stillwater Avenue. Um, with regard to the car wash, um, I guess it is, as Carl, co- excuse me, Kyle mentioned. Um, it's an, it's a permitted accessory use to this, to this business, and it is the owner's decision that they would like to try to have one there. Um, and if it fails, I guess that's their bad business decision, but, um, it is a. Permittable use as an accessory to the convenience store.
Can I add one, just one more comment about the traffic? Um, I don't know if you've ever tried to get out onto Stillwater Ave during certain parts of the day from Sylvan Road. But you can sit there for minutes on end, and frequently, I cannot make a left turn. I have to take a right onto Stillwater and go all the way down through Orno because I'm waiting so long to try to get out, so adding. A bigger business and a car wash, it just, it seems to me that there would be more cars and more traffic.
Thank you, are there, uh, other hands raised, Belle?
Uh, yes, uh, Luke Libree is next.
Very good.
I don't know.
Loop?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Luke Libree, I live at fourteen Sylvan Road in Orno, I've lived here since my daughter was one year old. She is now a third grader at Asa Adams, I also have a kindergarten at Asa Adams. And I want to tell you that I am in the food service industry and I know C-stores, I have worked with them for over a decade. I know their business model and I know what their plans are, and for the Dice Arts representative, I'd just like to say that. While you have commented that it's the same type of operation, it's the same number of gas pumps. I will say that you don't build a store like this and hope for the same foot traffic. That's just unrealistic and that is not the case, so I want the board to be clear on that, that the expectation is for increased business at this location. Um, and the proximity I have to the store raises a lot of concerns for me and my children. And I'll just give the example of, I, I can see the building from my backyard, not a quiet day, I can hear conversations that people are having in the parking lot. And it's pleasant and that doesn't bother me at all, my point is I can hear that noise from my backyard. And when my children are playing in their treehouse in the summer, I've gone outside and asked them to stop talking to the people who have parked at the store. And walked their dogs to go to the bathroom in the parking lot, um, across from the old communications building, the big building there. Um, cause people park there and they walk their dogs and they get on the highway and they go on their way, so that's very disconcerting that, you know, I and others on the street are trying to raise families. And the scope of the business is to increase, which is going to increase all the things that other, uh, butters have commented on, which is the noise. The traffic, I didn't think about the light until somebody raised that point, but it's a very good point as well. And if trucks do take advantage of that parking space, even if it isn't twenty-four seven. The, uh, engine noises of the running engines, because they have to keep the reefers running, uh, to stay cold, so the engines will be running. And the brake releases all the noises through whatever hours that they're stopping there, that directly, I don't know if you've toured Sylvan Road, but that. Shoots right into our backyards, right into my backyard, and because of the way the houses are, it literally, it echoes off our houses and you'd be able to hear it. All the more because of the increased size in this location, I'm not opposed to new business, I like Dice Arts as a business. I propose what Deb White mentioned, which is extremely, uh, following. The stipulations put in place to reduce noise, traffic disruptions and all the things that would make it unsafe for us as families. Potentially reduce property value, um, and we have, we wanna raise our family here, we are in it for the long haul. And something like this just kind of breaks our hearts, um, if it's not really given forethought for the Orno, um, people who live here.
So just, just a thought, this, this goes back to our, our discussion on buffering and screening. Uh, Scott, I, I was just wondering whether there's any consideration in that. The relocated island, uh, you know, that we mentioned was gonna be a lawn, something like that. Whether there, and, you know, any additional plantings, uh, to kind of farther, so we have, it shows the three existing ones. But perhaps, uh, but, uh, just a few more trees in that area, uh, you know, again, from a buffering screening standpoint. Don't wanna decrease visibility, but, uh, that, that might, uh, maybe knock down noise, uh, just a little bit, just maybe a little visual.
If I might, Mr. Speaker, before, uh.
Speaker before Scott addresses that, I would just like to add that. It might be good to consider some creative ideas, there's a dilapidated chain link fence that runs along the Orno property line. And a budding Sylvan Road residents that has fallen over people. The homeless people, the people that live in the woods by the closed building have walked through there from time to time, so. Maybe a, a, a large fence that's a stockade style, not chain length, it might block sound, things like that, that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address that one, that. We, we can't ask an applicant to.
Address, partially at least to direct, address Luke's comments, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just made a note and scratched on the plans and when we, when I talk to the landscape architect and. Go to the tree board, we'll absolutely add some landscaping, some tree growth, shrub growth, things to try to dampen. On that landscape area. Additionally, keep in mind that the, the new store is going to be. You know, somewhere in the facility of forty or fifty feet fur, I, I know that's not a lot, but forty or fifty feet further from Sylvan Road than the existing store.
So I, I think that that might be a reasonable solution, it, you know, it goes along with our buffering, screening. Discussion and, you know, rather than having it all, all on, perhaps something can be done, you, you.
We can certainly do that, I've heard the concerns.
I would also just, you know, weigh in on the, the kind of flow of traffic in and out of the proposal, you know, Steph has looked at it and. The kind of formal layout and, you know, with that second curb cut being pushed further down Godfrey away from Stillwater. Made a one-way exit and kind of reduced and width of that curb cut. You know, we felt that there were a lot of improvements along with the more dedicated parking. That would actually help the flow of traffic in there, even if there were to be. You know, sort of an increase in, in traffic. And going back to what, you know, kind of we talked about during the, the report portion that. Should the drive-through, you know, be utilized further than what's being proposed now, it would have to come back for further review. So if there were to be, you know, kind of major, you know, potential. Larger increases to traffic there that that would be looked at by the board again, to see if any other changes needed to be made.
Very good, thanks Kyle. Belle, do we have others?
We have one more, Jessica Libree, and I will activate her.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so that was my husband speaking, so my intro is there. I, I just want to say that I have a question about how many pumps are there now and how many will be going in. I know you said the same, but I'd like you to clarify that number, please. Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, there's, there are currently six fueling positions and for the, for the vehicles and. And two diesel and that will stay the same, six and two is my understanding what's supposed to be under there.
And how many parking spots are available now for eighteen-wheelers?
On that site, well, I'm looking, I'm looking at an aerial, aerial photograph actually on Google Earth as we speak. Because I was trying to get a better idea of where you folks were living and calling from. And, and right now, there is room for about four parkings, four tractor trailers to park on that site. And, 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 you know, I don't, I can't tell you how routinely there are, I can't tell you how routinely the, the, the ones that we have. Will be, will be used, that's, we tried to mimic about what was there when we, when we laid out this, the site, excuse me.
But you're increasing that from four tractor trailers to twenty-four spots?
No, no, no. Of all the parking spaces, only four are for tractor trailers, all the rest are just passenger vehicles.
Right, there, there's some, some confusion on the numbering on the plan. Basically, if you look at all the slots in the front of the store, one through sixteen, then there's. Some closer to Sylvan Road, seventeen through twenty-one, but if, if you circle around the building. It, they're just a, a number, that doesn't mean there are twenty-four parking spots for trucks, that's just.
Okay, okay, I understand, it's, it's very frustrating to be on this end, trying to understand what I'm, what I'm. Hearing without a visual, would have been really, really nice if this was available online prior to the meeting. So it's difficult for us to really assess that, and I just want to echo my husband's statements that it is, it is hard, we're, we're trying to raise children here, we're raising our family. And even now, sometimes when I walk by Dice Arts, I have seen needles. On the sidewalk and there is a lot of trash in that area. There was also a, there's been loiterers in that area that have been hanging out, like I said, right in my backyard. Yeah, yeah, so that, that's concerning and, and it does sound like you're increasing business. Which will increase traffic and, and that is very concerning to me.
Thank you. Belle, do we have any others, hands raised?
We have David Griffin.
Very good. David? Mr. Griffin?
He has been allowed to speak, but he needs to unmute first.
Thank you. My, my name's Dave Griffin and my brothers and I own land at the bottom of Sylvan Road. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask questions. And Scott, I'd like to just find out a little bit more about the car wash. There are all various types of car washes, is this one that is self-serving or is there an automatic? And then also, does it have a vacuum system in it? And have you just compared the, the noise levels of the, of the car wash?
The, the, the car wash is going to be one of, it's, it's going to be automated. It is not one of the ones that you go in and you're on a track and physically move. You, the, the car will be stationary and the machine goes around you, which is, it's basically the same, same design as. The car wash that Dice Arts built on Coldbrook Road a couple of years ago. And there are two vacuum stations associated with a car wash, but they're on the opposite side from the store. And face away from Sylvan Road.
The car wash that's up on Old Town has been referenced earlier. Has a sign on it for, at the vacuum and it says, no, no vacuuming after, after certain times, and I'm sure that was put up there to. To help the noise level at nighttime, is that something that you're considering to do? For this proposal?
We had not considered it, quite frankly, because the car wash would only operate when the store is open. But if that is something, if there needs to be a sign put up with regarding the hours of vacuuming. And it's different than the store hours that, than this board, not sure, I mean. It, if it's just within this board's purview, but that's, that's a question for Kyle, but I'm sure it's something that the owners would entertain. I had to keep in mind the way, the way that the vacuums on this particular building are set is that. There's actually walls on both ends of the building that come out and the roof comes out over the vacuum cleaners. So the vacuums are actually recessed into the side of the building, they're not like standalone vacuums out. You know, just on a concrete slab like you, like you see in some places.
Good, thank you, I, I do want to, I've seen a couple of comments come across the screen. You know, one of them, I noticed it seems like the, you know, the town has already made the decision, no, no decisions have been made on an applicant, we have to review these. Carefully listen to the public comment, but this, this is a process that we're, we're very consistent with this. You know, no preconceived notions, we, we have to review applications thoroughly and, and make sure that projects meet, meet our town ordinances. There was another question or I've seen a couple of comments. Didn't receive, you know, proper notice, so typically, you know, we do the best job we can. Getting the word out to a butters, that's, that's up to town staff to identify budding properties and those that should receive. Notice for projects that are near them, you know, or, you know, a budding formally. But the, the town would send those letters out and we. It's a little different because of COVID, you know, we're, we're doing the best job we can here, this is the first meeting, you know, that I, that I've chaired that. That we've opened it up so that you, you folks could speak, that, that is wonderful, that's how we do things. Back when we used to do that live, but the application material and typically on those notices. If, if I recall, that the application material is available through town staff. So, you know, if, if you get a notice in, in ample time, hopefully, you, you know, you would get noticed. And if you have interest, my hunch is that the town, it, it could probably share that electronically or have a link. Because with the, you know, limited hours and, you know, just the, the COVID situation, we, you know, had to, had to be a little bit more creative. How we get information out there, but do apologize if, if you did not receive notice, you know, we, we. Try to do the, the best job we can, it, it making sure that, that people are aware of projects in their area. So that's, that's typically how we do this, again, I, you know, I apologize that there's. You know, we're, we're doing the best job we can with share screens and, and, and all that, just so that you can see what we're talking about. But it's, it's not ideal, it's, you know, it's a little bit simpler if we're, if we're sitting in the council chambers and. Can flash up on the screen and, and, you know, plans are a little bit more, more viewable, but you're going to have to bear with us. You know, while, while we try to last, last through the, the COVID situation until we're, we're, we're back in person. So I appreciate your patience and, you know, we'll, we'll try to do better. So Belle, any more hands raised?
Not at this time.
Very good, I'm gonna leave the public hearing.
Sure, can I just add real quick, you know, we understand, we. We send out the butters notices based on our, our GIS mapping, which has. Property owners, which I believe are, are updated through Trio, I guess Jess, you can correct me if I'm wrong there, but. I believe that's where the property owner information is pulled from and the butters are, you know, then noticed via that. So, you know, one would be sent out to each of the, the properties, so if there were. A situation where there were multiple owners. You know, I guess whichever one was, you know, listed as the property owner through the database would be who it was. Addressed to at that property.
Can I just add Kyle? So yeah, so just in case the board isn't familiar as well, we send out postcards to. On the Friday, trying to remember how many weeks before it is, I think it's the Friday, two full weeks before the planning board, so. Those go out to property owners, we pull the butters list from the GIS, which pulls only the first listed owner on the property. So if in Trio there are two property owners listed, the first one is the one that it pulls. Generally, since the address is the same for both those folks, it's, it's usually a non-issue, it sounds like. It sounds like a card was received here or it was only addressed to the co-owner, I apologize for that. If you would like to reach out to town staff, we can work with you and making sure your addresses are updated. But that is what happens, postcards go out a couple of weeks in advance, they include a link to where the agenda can be viewed. And they include a brief summary of the agenda for the meeting.
Thank you, Jessica. Very good, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the public hearing open, do we have additional questions? From the board, we, you know, we've talked about a lot of things here, we've, we've talked about traffic. You know, my understanding, again, looking at the convenience store traffic modeling. Scott did explain that, you know, there, there, you know, there, there's a system that they, they follow to do that. I did not see, again, that I ended up having to, to get my packet from, from Kyle over the weekend. Because I, I, I'm traveling out of state at the moment, but I did not see a lighting study, I did have questions about that. Mr. Brayley did address that, I, I saw Kyle, you, you had a, just a summary. In your, in your review, so lighting again met, met the standards, you know, what, what is required. You know, at the, the parcel boundary, so we've talked about that, we've talked about screening and, and buffering. So, you know, there, right now, there'll be additional plantings of, of some type. Again, to address noise and visual, you know, visual issues on that. Reclaimed area that it mentioned was going to be the lawn. We talked about truck traffic. So other, other questions from, from the board? Want, want additional information on, on some of those topics? What, what do people think?
I don't have a question, Phil. But I think it might make sense, whenever we have. New folks that attend one of these meetings, I think that there's some confusion about what our role is. On the town and, and the fact that we're not deciding what we like and don't like. That, you know, if a, if a project comes, you know, is brought to us and it's allowed use in the zone which it, within which it exists. Which is the case here, and that project meets all of the, meets all the requirements in the ordinance. We can't then decide we don't like what they're doing, therefore we're going to do something different, you know, we're, it's a checklist. And if, if they meet the checklist, then our job is to. You know. Accept, so we don't really have a choice in that regard, so I'd just like to be clear with that.
No, I, I do appreciate that, that comment, you're, you're very helpful when, when I, I did, do forget to, to mention that. I mean, that, because we did receive another comment too about, you know, property values, those kinds of things. That, that is not one of our review criteria when we're looking at projects, so. We understand the, the concerns, but, but again, as, as Jed said, you know, there, there are town ordinances. You know, if, if people want to change that, there are opportunities, when we develop our comprehensive plan. That really is the driver of, of land use ordinances in, in the town of Orno. There are opportunities to, to make your voices heard. It seems like we just did that comp plan, but I think in a couple, three years, we'll, we'll, we'll be back at it again, so. Thanks for bringing that up. Other, other comments from the board? Questions? Belle, you know, before I close the public hearing, any, any hands raised?
So we have a hand raised from David Griffin who has spoken, and we have another hand raised from Jeremy Wicker who has not yet spoken.
Okay, Jeremy, I'd like to hear, hear from you.
Yes, hello, my name's Jeremy Wicker, I also live on Sylvan. And not to belabor Deb's point, but I would like to mention that my wife and I purchased our house last June and neither of us received notice of this meeting. So I think that there is, you know, some concern in that regard. My question for Dice Arts would be the number of trash receptacles on site. I would like to echo, I think it was Jessica's point, that there is a lot of trash that accumulates along Godfrey. That appears to be from Dice Art customers and I would also like to mention that I have also seen needles. On the roadway there while walking my dog, so I would be curious to see if there's. The number of trash receptacles and if there's any plan to address the trash.
Good. Scott? Scott, are you there?
I am, I am, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I, I don't know if you didn't want to hear anymore from me and you muted me. Yes, I can address that, Dice Art standard is that there is a trash receptacle at every pump. On, on the pump islands, and there are also trash receptacles on either side of the entry doors under the covered walkway. So in this case, there'd be three, four, five, I'm, I'm saying six trash receptacles. On the site along with, with a trash receptacle, a separate and distinct one over by the vacuums for the, for the car wash.
Very good, that, this, you know, can be a, a common problem, problem, I. I've worked on a lot of municipal cleanups during my, my career. And convenience stores do, do typically generate a, a lot of trash, you know, I've picked up a lot of. Irving's garbage in other towns and, and around, so again, encouraging Dice Arts to be. Good neighbors. Uh good neighbors is is uh just a a request uh from from the planning board. Again, that the uh that would be very helpful. We've we've heard a couple of comments on that uh already. So just. Just words of encouragement uh again to uh keep an eye on that uh again, as as a good neighbor.
It it's noted, and I got an asterisk after it on on my list to to talk to the owners about.
Very good. Uh thank you. Uh other other comments from the board? Uh Jessica, do we have any comments that are still hanging out there?
I have a comment, Phil.
Yeah, Dave.
I've lived on this on Sylvan Road for over fifty years. I saw this gas station when it was first built. And one of the things that happened is that. Part of the requirement to build that, there was a fifty-foot buffer strip. Deeded to the town, which is where the trees are between Sylvan Road and. What the next link's building. Unfortunately, tho- those those trees were planted about fifty years ago, and they've grown up so that they really don't. Many cases don't form a good buffer anymore.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's not it's not the responsibility of this applicant to do something, but I think the town needs to say, oh, all right, we own this this. Land. It was, the trees were planted by the residents of the of this on the street at that time. Uh a lot of little kids plant helped planted them. And I mowed around them for two or three years until they got big enough to take over the site. Over and on compete with the grass that was there. So I think that that just to sort of notice that maybe the town, maybe the tree board needs to consider. What can we do to remedy the situation? Because that would that would definitely cut down on noise, light, everything else. However, it does. Provide a corridor for homeless people or whatever to wander through, which has happened. I've seen him out there. So.
That's a good. Yeah, it's a good suggestion, Dave, and it and it's handy because you happen to know uh important people on the tree board. So. Uh yet yet another committee that that Dave is is a part of in the in the town of Orno. So that's a good suggestion, not not really for our consideration, but uh you know, again, comments from. From a butters uh uh again, duly noted and uh may maybe. Uh that the town could could help out in in this situation as well. So very good. Uh. I am going to close the public hearing. Uh I appreciate all the comments uh from. From the those folks that attended, and again, I I don't have answers for you on 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 a butter notice. Uh but again, we're always trying to do a better job uh just getting the word out. So. But uh not not saying that that mistakes aren't made, but uh we we do try to keep everybody. Uh informed as best we can. So. Uh further questions from the board, you know, we we've talked about, so on the the recommendations, we. You know, from the from the town staff, uh again, they they did check on stormwater management. Uh. The, you know, that the federal state licenses, the the all of those copies are going to be provided. They're going to be working on a planting plan, which is going to include additional trees in that area that we just talked about. Uh. Other issues from from the board? I I think we've we've covered a lot of topics.
The only other recommendation that I would add is the the other condition about uh coming back to the board for an amended site plan review. Should someone, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Comments, questions fro- from the board for the applicant or Kyle? All right, uh I do want to mention, we have before us. What are proposed findings of fact uh for this project, again, for for discussion? I'm gonna go through these uh one by one, and I'm just gonna ask. Uh for, you know, if there's any issues and just give me a nod, a thumbs up or a thumbs down uh and speak up when we get to them. But I'm gonna step on through these. These are proposed findings of fact for Dice Art Realty Company. Site plan review dated April twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one pursuant uh pursuant to Article Six, Section eighteen dash one seventy-seven of the Orno Code of Ordinances. Orno Planning Board has considered the application of Dice Art Realty Company for the expansion. Of the convenience store and fuel station use located tax map eleven dash zero lots fifty-nine and sixty in the commercial one district. And based on all evidence presented by the applicant reviewing agencies, town departments, and the public found the following. Number one, requirements of the district that the proposed use is an allowable use in the commercial one district, and that the proposal complies. With the applicable dimensional requirements of the district. Are there any issues with that? Seeing none. Uh number two, compliance with town ordinances and codes that the proposed use structures, setbacks, buffers. And layout meet the provisions of applicable regulations of the town, including all pertinent sections of Chapter eighteen of the land use ordinance. Any issues with that? Seeing none. Number three, utilization of the site that this construction is within the nat- natural capabilities of the site, is located in a suitable area of the site. Fits with the existing topography of the site and can accommodate any drainage associated with the construction. Any issues? Uh number four, traffic and pedestrian access. The expansion of the use will provide more room for parking, decrease the width of an existing curb cut. Allow for more room for maneuverability and provide dedicated parking for truck traffic. We we have discussed discussed that, all the parking requirements, uh are there any issues with that? Right, uh number five, storage of materials, that there will be no exposed storage of materials. I do think that's an improvement. Uh for, you know, solid waste as well. There'll be a a screened-in uh dumpster where there is not one at at the moment, so. Uh again, that that should be an improvement over existing. Any issues there? Uh number six, stormwater management, that adequate provision has been made for the collection and disposal of all stormwater due to the fact that the planning board. Had approved the original subdivision along Godfrey Drive based on future development calculations that anticipated. Maximum of one and a half acres of impervious area per lot in the subdivision. And that the proposed impervious area of this project is only a net increase of one point one three acres. I believe Kyle explained that to us uh fairly well, and our town engineer uh and public works director also weighed in. Any issues with that? Uh seven, erosion control, that the applicant is provided an erosion and sediment control plan, and will follow any applicable best management practices. Any issues there? Nope. Uh eight, water supply and sewage disposal, that the site can be served by off-site water and s- water supply and sewage disposal. We did, we did hear that there will actually be an improvement uh with the, you know, from our uh request from the uh sewer superintendent. Uh to improve that. Are there any issues? Nope. Uh number nine, utilities, that adequate provision has been made for all utilities. Any issues there? Uh number ten, natural features, that natural features are preserved on on the site insofar as practical. And that a vegetated buffer shall be provided on the eastern portion. Of the lot, and that the developer will work with main D E P to mitigate any impact to wetlands in the lot via in in Lufy. I think we've talked about uh uh buffering and screening uh quite a bit. Again, good discussion there. Are there any further issues with that? All right, groundwater and surface water for uh quality protection. This is number eleven, that the proposed development and use will not adversely impact the quality or quantity. Of groundwater available to abutting properties or to public water supply systems. Are there any issues with that? Number twelve, hazardous special and radioactive materials that the use of the site does not involve the handling, storage, or use of hazardous special or radioactive materials. Are there any issues? Seeing none. Number thirteen, shoreline relationship, that the site is not within the shoreline area. No issues there. It's fourteen, solid waste management, that no changes to solid waste management are proposed, and the dumpsters will be located in a fenced. Area screening them from view. Are there any issues there? Uh fifteen, historic and archaeological resources, that the site is not known to contain historic or archaeological resources. Any issues? Uh number sixteen, financial capacity, that the applicant has the financial capacity to carry out the project. Are there any issues with that? Lastly, uh seventeen, noise and lighting, that the facility will operate within the noise and lighting standards in town ordinances. And I do believe we had a good discussion on on that, on those topics as well. Any any issues with that? No. Very good with with those proposed findings of fact. Uh we do have uh again, we're now uh it's time to consider this. Can I get a motion, please? Judge, you've been taking notes?
I got double muted. Before the motion, I just want to confirm uh in my mind, there's five recommendations.
Correct.
The three, and then I just want to confirm uh that the language I have for the additional two uh seems correct. Uh the first is uh meet with the tree board to come to an agreement on the on a planting plan. That includes plantings in the island northeast of the new building. Uh the goal being that's the the goal being screening and reducing noise.
Mm-hmm.
And then the second item being uh the drive-through cannot become active without a site plan amendment via the city via the planning board.
That that sounds sounds right to me. Kyle, do you have any question or any comments?
I'm sorry, I missed the last one, Judge. Could you repeat the the fifth condition?
The drive-through cannot become active without a site plan amendment via the planning board.
I think we would just want to say that the the drive-through cannot be used by um another party other than. Um Dice Arts um without being referred back to the planning board for an amendment. Um if they during um covid or after want to take some of that. Convenience store in-person traffic and sort of shift it through the drive-through, that doesn't seem to be. Really generating additional um traffic, whereas if they were to lease the space in the convenience store to another. Um party. I think that's what would really trigger the uh amended review.
All right, so the drive-through cannot be used by a third party without a site plan amendment via the planning board. And we don't feel think a sixth item would be that they get um. Main D E P approval to impact the wetlands. Via in Lufy, because number one is really about just can, you know, confirming. The whole one point five acre question, right? The total lot, two lots now.
So that would fall under number two, I think.
It will, under federal and state, that falls there. Okay.
Uh I just want to make sure because uh Scott had mentioned that he will. Provide a a formal statement, so I was wondering whether a portion of number one still exists. So that that information was coming from Scott, if I recall correctly, that that he would uh have formal confirmation of number one. Uh and then number two, the the wetland issue a- again is is addressed in number two, is that? Am I off base there? Is that uh ring a bell?
No, I I would agree. Um the one thing I I own, and I'm not nitpicking at all, I'm fine with exactly what Kyle and. A member McIntosh have said, one and two kind of go hand in hand, because getting.
Yeah.
From D E P is confirming that we're in conformance with all the state and federal laws, but but I have no issue that they're separate.
Right, and we can keep this simple and knock them into two uh if I'm I'm fine with that.
I have no issues.
All right, we we all set with that, Judd, then? So we would now have four?
So we're removing number one and going with just number two?
Well, yeah, I guess as long as there's clarification that uh it will just to again that. They will supply any nestral uh necessary federal state licenses or permits to the code officer prior to obtaining a building permit. Uh this, I I you know, maybe you just add a sentence that this includes. You know, confirmation from from D E P staff uh about the stormwater management issue. Maybe just add add one sentence.
Right. Uh I I move that we approve the site plan review uh application by Dice Arts Realty Company for the expansion of the convenience store and fuel station. Uh located at tax map eleven dash zero lots fifty-nine and sixty in the commercial C one district. With four conditions or recommendations, conditions. Uh number one, that the applicant will supply any necessary federal and state licenses or permit permits to the code enforcement officer. Uh prior to obtaining a building permit. This includes D E P approval. Uh number two. Uh that they meet with the planning with the tree board to come to an agreement on a planting plan that includes plantings. Uh in the island northeast of the new building, the goal being screening and reduced noise. Number three. That the drive-through cannot be used by a third party uh without a site plan amendment via the planning board. And number four, the project will follow uh any and all other applicable requirements of the ordinance.
Thank you, Judd. Uh we we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Very good. Thanks, John. Uh further discussion?
Yeah, I I have a question. Um at one point during the discussion, we had talked about um an area that was gonna be grassy, and. We said maybe there could be trees on or well, some sound. Um preventing plantings on that area. I.
Yes.
Is did that get included in this?
Yep, that's Jed just added as part of that planting plan, the area that the northeast corner, which is that that's the. The location of, you know, that that additional plantings, other than what what they showed on their original plan, and the. The details of that are to be, you know, again, in in consultation with with the the tree board. Uh and again, it sounds like there's gonna be additional discussion, I hope, uh along Sylvan Road on the town owned side. Uh perhaps and and you know, enhance that that side of the road too uh to. I guess, help help the neighbors out uh even further. So.
Thank you.
But. That's another discussion. Uh very good. So we 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 do have a motion. We have a second. Uh any other uh discussion? Good, Jessica, could you please uh read the rule?
Alrighty. Uh Krista Spencer?
Approve.
John Beckett?
Approve.
Lisa Buck?
Approve.
Phil Rock?
Approve.
Michael Costello?
Approved.
Judd McIntosh?
Approved.
Very good.
Part with one abstaining.
We're good. Thank thank you, Jessica. All right, uh next up, old business. Uh we're gonna continue a discussion on a draft. Land use ordinance amendment to create section eighteen dash one fifty-three. Solar energy systems, amend section eighteen dash one oh six schedule abuses, and amend section eighteen dash thirty-one. Uh definitions to define zone and create performance stance uh performance standards for solar energy. Systems in the town of Orno. And I I believe, was this tabled? So this is just a continued public hearing that's open? Is that correct?
Um I do think uh we should open the public hearing again.
Uh okay.
Just in um to make sure. Um. But yeah, I can, if you're ready, I can give uh the update on the changes from last time.
If if you would, please.
Sure. So uh yep, this ordinance amendment came before the board last month. Um we didn't have, I think there were only four members present. Um at the last meeting, so I'll just give a.
Oh.
A brief recap and overview. Um you know, this ordinance amendment is really to define and create solar energy systems as a a land use. We currently don't have um anything in the the ordinance that specifies um solar specifically. So this was a way to uh kind of create a more efficient permitting process um with the hopes of, in general, supporting. Um the use of of solar in the town, um but also providing a more tailored um kind of ordinance process uh to deal with it. So um. Some of the comments from last time. some of the, uh, comments from last time, uh, I'll talk about some of the, the vegetation visual impacts first, as I did in the memo. Um, so for E, um, I believe Krista, last time, you had, uh, made a comment about kind of the, the significant, you know, uh, removal of significant volume of topsoil. Um, how is that determined? You know, the board doesn't necessarily want to be put in a situation where they're making that determination um, each time. So, uh, added some language in there, um, that gives the planning board an option. Um, you know, refers to may and not shall, um, where the board may require an applicant um, to submit their vegetation management plan to the Penobscot County Soil and Water Conservation District for review and, and comment, um, that the project uh, would be making as little impact as possible on the soil. Um, this was sort of borrowed from our language in our, our earthwork, um, ordinance language, where, um, you know, there used to be a requirement that, uh, you know, those earthwork projects were reviewed by the Penobscot County um, Soil and Water Conservation District, and then we changed it to a kind of optional, um, thing for the planning board. Um, so that felt like, uh, instead of coming up with a, a specific number or leaving it up to the board, um, that it could be an option if, if the board wanted to. Uh, the next, uh, change was to, uh, five A, um, which really talked about the, the placement and the kind of promoting the placement of accessory ground-mounted solar projects, um, to the side and the rear of the lot. Uh, but again, the, you know, some board comments from last time, where that that's kind of, um, uh, the language was a little bit vague, so we just added in some clarifying language. Um, you know, stating if it's determined based on, uh, the topography or other natural features, um, on the site, uh, that the only, uh, feasible location to place the solar system was in the, the front yard. Um, that measure should be taken, um, you know, when we reference by the applicant, um, to screen the system from the street. And then that last bit in five A, uh, to the maximum extent practicable as determined by the permitting authority. So that line was really to address the idea of if, um, if there was vegetation present that would shield the, uh, the solar panels from, from being optimal, um, that the board had some discretion there or the code officer to, um, to give them some flexibility in determining where it could be, where it could be placed. So that it wasn't forcing an applicant to put a, a system in a place that it wouldn't be, um, feasible to operate in. The, the last change was really based around, I think just some general, uh, flow issues, uh, and I'm not sure if this fully addressed the, the concern or not. But the general kind of flow of the, the way the, the ordinance is written. You know, you have section one where it talks about which types of solar systems are considered accessory uses or principal uses. Section two refers to the permitting authority, whether something goes to the code officer or planning board. And then three, uh, I think a problem we noted last time was when we started getting into talking about the height and the setback restrictions. It started talking about accessory and principal uses, and it caused this need to flip back to section one to, um, kind of figure out what you were, which systems you were talking about. So instead of referring in the height section to accessory and principal uses, um, we just labeled specifically, um, which types of ground-mounted systems, uh, had to meet those requirements. So, um, you know, the standards pretty much stayed the same where it's, uh, you know, the large-scale systems, um, specifically in the commercial districts would be, um, would be open to the higher, you know, normal building heights of those districts, because those districts are generally less residential. Um, and you know, the visual kind of impact requirements are usually less. Um, but then all other ground-mounted systems, so your, your small-scale systems, your medium-scale systems, and your large-scale systems in, you know, the more residential areas like the, the agriculture district or the low-density district. Um, those would have to abide by that, that lower height restriction. And, um, I know a comment last time, uh, was also about sort of, uh, you know, what sort of expertise was referenced during, um, the development of the ordinance. So a good deal of the, the ordinance was, um, when we were coming up with it, the state in February of twenty twenty released, uh, a document that had best practices and a model ordinance. And that was put together by, um, Maine Audubon and the Natural Resources Council of Maine. Um, and when they were creating their model ordinance, um, they think they had a lot of contact with people in the industry, um, as well as, uh, solar developers, um, and advocates, um, and, and different levels of planning. So, um, a lot of these standards and numbers were kind of, uh, the general ideas were taken from that and then sort of tailored, uh, to our community here. So for anyone who wasn't here, I'm happy to go into more detail about other aspects, but I don't want to spend too much time rehashing things that were not necessarily talked about already.
Just a quick question before we open up a public hearing, so I, I did read through it, uh, sounds like some good discussion, uh, last time. But so let's, let's go to five A, so just when I read that, because again, this is really the, the, the first time I, I poured through it, but, uh, I'm, I, I assume, uh, that, that we're just talking about a ground-mounted for visual impact. I don't know whether we need to specify that. I know it says, uh, located to the side or rear of the principal structure, but I just, you know, obviously, uh, you know, if, if it's roof-mounted, you don't, you don't have a lot of choices that, how you're going to do that. I didn't know that that needed clarification, but I, I, you know, I did, I didn't want people to think that they're going to have to put it on the, the shady side of their, their roof. But, uh, just random, random clarification, but, uh, that was really the only comment I, I had. Other, other comments before we open up, uh, public hearing? Did, did, uh, those changes address, uh, what you discussed last time?
Phil, I think the answer to the thing you raised is that, uh, solar energy systems that are considered accessory uses, so that would make them ground-mounted. Because a, a, a roof is part of the house, so it's not accessory.
Yeah, I thought it's, yeah, maybe I, I misread it when I looked earlier at, you know.
So maybe if we put ground-mounted in there, that, that would keep somebody else from reading over that.
Yeah, the, the roof-mounted would still be considered accessory. It's, there's accessory uses and accessory structures, um, so it's kind of, uh, it's hard to, sometimes you're both, sometimes you're one or the other. Um, so in the case of a roof-mounted, you're really an accessory use at that point, because, you know, you're correct, Krista, you're on the same structure. Uh, whereas the ground-mounted would be sort of an accessory use and an accessory structure. Um, but yeah, I could clarify in there that it just doesn't apply to roof-mounted, just to make it clear.
Right, I, I, again, that, that's all I was looking for, whether it needed to be clarified. And Krista, yeah, I, I had to check too, because I went back to the accessory use of it, you know, because it had roof-mounted and small ground-mounted, so either way, uh, you know, not a, not a big deal, minor point, but I might, I might as well get my, my two cents in, so. Yeah, are there other questions? I, I think this is a, a, a good thing to undertake, you know, as, as we see solar just popping up everywhere now, but. Alright, I, I am going to open up the, the public hearing. I, I imagine, uh, Belle, that there's just a line of people waiting, waiting to comment?
Uh, we do have Jeremy Dill, who has raised his hand and wants to speak.
Very good, great, Jeremy.
Hi there, uh, my name is Jeremy Dill and I am on the board of a corporation that owns property along College Avenue. Um, so, so I guess as I was looking at this proposed ordinance, one of the areas that struck me, um, was the schedule of uses under two E and specifically looking at the, uh, university zoning that's listed there, um, it seems to me that it's a potential oversight to, I guess, be as liberal with the zoning that's there for the university. It looks like you've defaulted to that P slash S zoning structure there that allows, um, especially for these medium and large-scale solar systems. Um, the medium being fifteen hundred square feet to two acres and the large scale being over two acres. Um, I'm not sure if the planning board is aware, but the university has just entered a five-point-seven million-dollar design phase of a six-megawatt heat and power plant and a six-megawatt solar farm, uh, for Orno. Um, so you know, this ordinance and this, this use is ever more important now. Um, to give you some perspective, um, when we're talking about like a six-megawatt solar farm, there was a five-megawatt solar farm that was built in Belfast, that takes up twenty acres. Um, January twenty twenty-one, they just approved one for Dover Foxcroft, that's only three megawatts and covers eighteen-point-two acres. So at the very least for the university zoning, I feel like it should be as strict as your other areas where it requires a site plan review by the board and not just, um, the P slash S zoning that allows for a site plan review if the, it's proposed within five hundred feet of College Avenue. And then just a, a run-of-the-mill building permit if it's outside of five hundred feet of College Avenue. And honestly, I feel like the, the stronger zoning stance there would be for a solar array that large to not be permitted within five hundred feet of College Avenue and then require a site plan review outside of five hundred feet of College Avenue. Um, I just can't see something as large as, you know, a, a two-acre solar farm being that close to College Avenue. And I, and I hope the, the university is kind of working with the town and, and working with the planning board as they look at the scope of a project this big and are, you know, being inclusive in their designs. Um, so that you guys are able to give input along the way and not simply presented with a final print, plan for approval or to be bypassed altogether, um, as they would seek just a building permit to build what could be over a two-acre solar farm on areas of their property.
Kyle, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, so I think it's a, um, it's a valid, uh, point. There are examples in the ordinance where, um, you know, this, this kind of option is used where if something is within five hundred feet of the university border or college Ave, that it's, um, it's just a permit, whereas elsewhere in town it, um, um, or if it's outside of that five hundred feet, sorry, um, it's, you know, just a permit, uh, where elsewhere in town it might be site plan review. Um, but inside that five hundred feet, as you get closer to, um, you know, away from the interior of the university campus, um, it becomes site planner view. But there are also examples of land uses, um, in the university district that just are, you know, require site plan review. So making that consistent with, um, you know, other districts in town. Um, I, I think there's, you know, precedence there to, to do that, um, and to allow that. I think some of the thought with the, the, the lowered review process, um, is that, you know, the university campus, once you get, you know, kind of away from the border and college Ave, um, is that that's sort of, you know, they're enclosed space, so whereas site plan review is looking a lot at the impact on, um, abutting properties and what it's doing to the area. And because, um, you know, a project outside of that, that proximity to college Ave is, um, you know, you're getting more within the interior of the university campus and it's surrounded by mostly other university uses. Um, you know, I think that's why that was, uh, created and exists in the first place. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I could certainly see a discussion happening where, um, site plan or review, um, just in general in the university district for systems of that size, uh, was required.
Thank you, Kyle. Are there, there are other comments from the board on, on that point? I, I guess I don't see any hands raised, uh. Uh, do we, we want to address that, a valid point by, by Mr. Bill? And Kyle, what, what would your preference be? You've, you've been more, uh, in, involved with us. What, what, what do you think?
Sure, so I would say the next step after, uh, in, an ordinance amendment, um, goes through the planning board is, you know, it goes back to the town council and instead, and really prepares a report, um, to the town manager that's shared with the council. Um, that report usually goes over, um, not only any comments and recommendations by the planning board, but sort of the level of public input and comment as well. So, um, I think, um, one way or another, that comment, um, about that would be, would be brought up and referenced to the, to the council for discussion. So whether or not the board wants to specifically recommend the change or just recommend that that discussion be had by the council, I think either way is.
Yeah, I'd, I'd almost rather punt on that and, and Jeremy, just, just so you know, there will be, uh, another public hearing at, at the council level, because we're, we're tasked with, uh, passing along our recommendations and then, then they'll, they'll get to chew on this for, uh, for the, the last step. So, uh, are people okay with, again, uh, again, noting that, passing along that, that recommendation or suggestion, uh, suggestion?
Okay, it looks to me, it looks to me like, um, we could be a little bit more specific than just sending the comment along. And, um, certainly if we're talking about twenty acres or something, that would get us, uh, into large scale and perhaps for large scale, there should not be the option of a permit, that it just be site plan review. But then the other one, it's where we have, um, permit or site plan review is for medium scale. And those are not that big. And it seems to me that, you know, that potentially could stay as permit or site plan review, uh, depending on, you know, what it is. But definitely on the large scale one, I, I, I kind of feel like we should push it a little harder than just pass the comment along.
I would agree.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that as well. Uh, other comments? Does that seem reasonable? So Krista's comment, uh, would just change that one category or recommend that one category, go to site plan and leave medium is P, P slash S. Other, other comments?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Very good, uh, appreciate the comment, Jeremy. Belle, are there any other hands raised?
There are not.
There are not. Alright, uh, again, additional questions from the board? So, right now, our, our recommendation, we're not voting on anything, but, uh, our recommendation would be to accept the changes based on, uh, two meetings worth of discussion and that, that one additional edit and then Kyle, well, actually two edits. See, Kyle, you mentioned clarifying the, the roof-mounted slash ground-mounted comment.
Right, right, yeah, I'll add that.
Okay. So does that, that seem reasonable? For our recommendation to, to council? Thumbs up, good to go? Alright, yeah, thanks, thanks for all the, the discussion and edits. Alright, that's all we need on this item, right, Kyle? All right, that's all we need on this item right now. We're not voting on anything or, or. Do we vote on this?
I think we can have a, a vote just to, to recommend it along.
Sure. Why, why not? Jessica, actually, so we need, let's, let's get the, the one we gotta do it right, uh, do the motion, uh, please, just a formal motion.
I move that we agree with the amendment to the Orno Code of Ordinances to Implement Standards for Solar Energy Systems with two edits. The first that the large scale ground mounted systems for university do require a site plan review. And the third item, excuse me, the second item is five A to clarify that accessory use is ground mounted solar systems.
Well, uh, Judd, we actually have other edits in here that are based on what we did last time.
Right. Right, the two edits, the two edits to the edited document. I'm just, edited document, yes.
Very good. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. Uh, thank you, Judd. Can I have a second, please?
I'll say.
Very good. Lisa, you, you've got it. Uh, further discussion. Jessica, you're up.
All right, just so I'm clear, this is the vote to recommend to the council with changes?
Yep.
Okay. All righty then. Krista Schwenser?
Agreed.
John Beckett?
Agreed.
Dave Thompson?
Agreed.
Muted Dave there.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
Phil Rock?
Yes, me as well.
Michael Costello?
I agree.
Judd McIntosh?
Agreed.
That's seven four.
Very good. Thank you, Jessica. Uh, next up, discussion, uh, uh, Kyle, what, what, what do we got on tap for, for next month?
All right. So I said before the meeting, we have, uh, an application in for a, uh, marijuana retail store business um, in the C one district. Um, so that will, uh, looks like we'll be coming forward, uh, at the next meeting. Um, that's the only official application so far. Uh, so one or two maybe other things that might make it in time for that meeting, um, but at the very least, we would be reviewing that.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, I do want to follow up on, on, uh, our first public hearing today. I, 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 I don't like hearing, uh, when, when people aren't getting notices and I, I'm not sure, again, from, from a process, how, how that can be, uh, you know, improved. Uh, there are questions, you know, I, I couldn't see all the, the chat that, that continued, but that, you know, somehow, you know, I don't know what the answer is, you know, our system isn't foolproof, but, uh, you know, and, and just, just some consideration, just to make sure, uh, that, that people get their, their notices. And I, I don't have all the answers, but I, I, I do not like hearing that during a public hearing that, that people either didn't get their card or whatever. I, I just, again, that their concern was noted. Uh, and I, I just, you know, any, any way we could do a, a better job with that, uh, uh, please, please try, so.
Yep. So we do send the notices out the same, uh, time, uh, each month. Um, so they, they go out ahead of when they're required to go out. Um, we use, you know, our, our software to, to generate the list of, of butters. Um, yep. So we can look at the, the list that was sent out, um, to make sure, um, that they went to the, um, required people. Um, but, uh, but, you know, we, we generate that list based on our, um, you know, tax info that we have on record at the town. Um, so there are, you know, standards in the ordinance as well. I kind of talk about, um, you know, that's, that's sort of the obligation of the, the public notice. So, um, but yeah, we can certainly look into it. And make sure that everything was sent out.
One thing to look into or consider is that, um, we had in the chat, we had the example of co-owners. And one of them got the card and the other one apparently was not aware of that the card had been received. And, uh, that probably happens in more than one household. And, uh, as the trailing party in my family, uh, it's always my husband who gets the notices. He shares them, so it's not a problem. But, uh, if he, if, you know, somebody just files them somewhere and doesn't mention it, then the other party may well feel like they, they haven't been notified. So I wonder if we could make sure that when there are co-owners, both of them get notified.
Sure. Yeah, we, yeah, we'll, we'll look into it, um, and, and try to get that going forward.
I mean, we, we've always had this issue, you, you know, again, whether it's, you know, meeting announcements, uh, you know, I know we have a system in place and you, you could try all kinds of different avenues and, and, and I know people still, uh, don't, don't get the word sometime, but if, if, if we have identified, uh, you know, a potential issue and it's not, uh, you know, I guess a huge expense to, to send another card out to several people, you know, maybe, maybe that's the answer. I just, again, I'd, I'd like to just, just see whether there's, there's room for improvement there in, in our system. Uh, so we, we can avoid hopefully, you know, hearing those, those types of comments in, in the future.
And, and one thing to be, um, clear is that the ordinance requires that we notify the assessed, um, owner. So any per, that happens after April first means that, um, they, those new owners, um, so the people who bought in June, they wouldn't be the assessed owners because it's as of the, the date of April first. So, um, there's always going to be some of that, um, discrepancy when, um, properties are bought and sold. Uh, okay, in terms of timing.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, you know, I don't think any system is foolproof, but I, I, again, just, it's worth considering and just, just seeing whether, whether we can do a better job. Uh, very good. Uh, so I did mention this, uh, hinted at it. We actually have three applicants, uh, for the two vacant, uh, planning board, uh, seats. Uh, they've been, been vacant a while, ever since, uh, Jeremy left and uh, there will be discussions, uh, interviewing those applicants. The council's going to do that sometime and, you know, Belle's gonna, you know, uh, give me a heads up. I'll, we'll probably participate in, in interviews or just listen anyways. Uh, so we might, might have a full board, uh, sooner than later, which, which would be welcome. So that's, that's the update. Uh, I think, uh, last item on our agenda is, is adjournment.
Could I ask a question first?
You may.
Are you allowed to tell us, Kyle, where this marijuana dispensary is going to be at? Because that could be a, a fun meeting.
Yep. So the application has come in, so it is, uh, you know, public information. Um, so it would be located in the, um, in the university plaza, the shopping mall on Stillwater Ave.
Okay. So essentially right across the street from this project that we just.
Yes, in a very similar area. Yes.
Yes.
Maybe we shouldn't schedule anything else for that meeting.
Good thinking.
Yep. Any other, uh, comments? All right. Last up is, uh, adjournment. Can I get a, a motion, please?
Move adjourn.
Second.
Uh, Lisa, was that your second? All right, very good. Uh, discussion, seeing none. Uh, Jessica, one last time.
To adjourn the April planning board meeting. Krista Schwenser?
Yes.
John Beckett?
Yes.
Dave Thompson?
Yeah.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
Phil Rock?
So yes for me.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
Judd McIntosh?
Yes.
That's seven four. Meeting adjourned at eight forty seven.
Very good. We'll, we'll see you all in, uh, a month.
And to force me with you.
Have a, have a good evening.